Hold your horses.
Yeah.
All right.
Kevin, I'll just open it up because it is a selectmen's meeting. Let's get that over.
Sorry.
Whenever you're ready, Frank.
Done.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Today's October 29th. Thank you all for coming. Today is posted as a Board of Selectmen's emergency meeting because of Hurricane Sandy that's coming up the coast and just about to fall on us. This is probably one meeting the Board of Selectmen's going to say less. Listen to safety officers, the emergency preparedness team, and then we can go to discussion afterwards. So I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry for starting preemptively there. I didn't know. Forgot the cameras. So I'm just going to give the Board a general quick overview and then turn it over to Roger and the department heads to go through in detail what we've done. First of all, just a mention of the Board. We have learned a great deal about emergency operations because of the two events last year. And an enormous amount of work has taken place over the last year based on the lessons that we learned, based on those voluminous after-action reports that we collectively wrote and you've all seen. I had a briefing early this morning with the department heads and Roger, and we shared, everybody shared a lot of things that they've been doing, and I was frankly surprised, and very pleasantly so, to hear a lot of work that I didn't know was going on, and I think you'll be pleased to hear a lot of things that perhaps you're not aware of as well. And then all the normal things have been happening to get ready for the storm. So generally speaking, we're looking at a wind event with some rain, and Roger will get into that in a little more detail. Hope we're right on the cusp. I don't know. I don't know what it is. We keep being right on the edge of these storms. You know, we could get clobbered. We may escape any heavy damage. So we're preparing for the worst. All the preparations have been made in terms of buildings. Talked to the school superintendent last night. She asked for what our thoughts were in terms of closing school. I reflected I thought she or her inclination was to do that. I reflected that I thought that was a prudent step because having kids out and this. It's not so much this morning getting to work. It's more getting home this afternoon because the storm is supposed to start really getting going around noon time, mid-afternoon, and then peak tonight. So we're a lot more concerned about getting people home than we were necessarily getting them in here. I know a lot of towns closed, town halls right from the get-go this morning. Debbie made the decision to close school because it's a lot tougher to do midday closure, early closure, than it is to just make the decision so parents can make arrangements. I made the decision to keep town facilities open this morning, primarily get the payroll done. We'll be closing at noon, sending everybody home, all nonessential people home. Library has concurred with that. They're going to do the same thing. So basically, town government per se will be shut down at noon. Emergency department heads will be around. It's kind of, you know, I told people, if you live nearby, go home. If you don't, hang around here. So everybody will be available. We're not going to plan another meeting after this one because it's going to be, next meeting will be event-based. If things start to deteriorate, then we'll call the staff in. But we'll meet at the McGinty Center. We'll fire up the Emergency Operations Center. Roger will make that call in consultation with me, and I'll immediately call you to let you know that we are in operation. So that's kind of the overview, and Roger will get into a few more specifics. And then when Roger's done, we're going to go round robin to the department heads. And of course, you all know the esteemed and inimitable Tom Coughlin from National Grid. Tom is with us yet again, and we're very pleased about that because he is without a doubt our favorite guy from National Grid. So welcome back, Tom.
Rog?
And it's his anniversary, by the way. He likes to do this every year on his anniversary.
As Kevin said, we've been monitoring this storm for over the last five days. So it's given us plenty of time to make sure that all of our resources, our equipment is ready and that we can handle anything that might be thrown at us as a community. It's a slow-moving storm. It has not hit land yet. It's been moving around 10 to 15 miles an hour. Originally, on Saturday at the conference call that we had, the storm was going to be impacting us around eight in the morning. And then yesterday, they had changed it that it was going to be around 10 o'clock in the morning, we'd start seeing some impacts. It's a 12-hour storm is what we're looking at. So from 10 o'clock to 10 o'clock is where we're going to see majority of the impacts from this storm. It's going to probably peak, as Kevin said, somewhere around 12 to 3 o'clock. That's going to be where the peak is. Our area hasn't really changed all that much in the last three days in regards to what they've been giving us for information. We're looking at 30 to 30 mile-an-hour winds with spikes in around 50 to 55 mile-an-hour winds. Again, as Kevin said, that that's kind of just at that, that point is, you know, what kind of impacts we're going to see from that. I do agree with Tom Coughlin at a last meeting that they've done a lot of grape pruning over the summer. So that should help limit the amount of outages that we see. But that wind is just right at that point where it's kind of unpredictable. The positive thing is on the rain. Roger Hill and his staff have been prepared, preparing for flooding. We're looking at one to three inches of rain throughout a 72-hour period. So that should be manageable. The biggest areas that we have to look at is storm drains being plugged by leaves. And Roger Hill and his staff have been working diligently on that to make sure that that's going to be not an issue for us. There was at one point at the beginning of this storm, people were hearing that there might be snow or it might be a mixture. The temperatures that we're looking at for this storm have been constant. They're looking at anywhere from 56 to 60 degrees. So I think that the cold weather component that we were, we're being told that the earlier parts of the storm are pretty much not, not going to be an issue for us. And that, that weather temperature is constant pretty much for the week. That leads us into a few other things. You know, what is the biggest concern for the town of Foxborough? And it's got to be basically power outages. That's why I'm ecstatic to have Tom Coughlin here as a liaison, as we saw for the last two storms a year ago. By having Tom here, we had direct information, direct, you know, conversations with National Grid. I've already directed the police chief and the public works director, if they need to get a hold of Tom. Deputy Chief Steve Bagley is going to be with him at all times. So we have that direct ability to get him where we need him if we have any concerns in the community. So again, as Kevin said, Tom, welcome again. In regards to if we have a power outage scenario like last year, a lot of questions have been posed to you folks as the Board of Selectmen, along with the department heads and the town manager about sheltering. It's very, very clear that it all depends on what is the critical need of the community. If it's, if it ends up being our senior housing again, and it's our fragile seniors that we're looking at, we would absolutely open up a local shelter here in the community. If it's a part of our, our community that is middle-aged or younger homeowners, will probably will take part in the regional sheltering that the state has been encouraging us to do for years. At this point, no shelter in our area has been established or open. There is six shelters that have been opened by the Commonwealth. They're all in the coastal communities. Why is that? This is really a coastal impact. That's the biggest part of our state that's going to be impacted by this is the coastline. And that message has been reaffirmed every time we do a conference call with MEMA. It's pretty obvious that that's going to be the hardest area hit in the state. Again, I want to make it clear, we're not going to overreact, but we're not going to underreact in regards to shelters. And if a decision is made that we're going to open up a shelter, we will work as a team like we did last year, and we will make sure we get the word out to all of the, the community. Now, last year, we did a half-decent job, I'll call it, getting the word out. We, for one whole year, we've really been working strongly with Chief O'Leary, with Deb Spinelli, along with Vicki Lowe and the senior, seniors, and with Pauline Clifford and Mike John. All of us with the folks that we were concerned about is getting them registered in the reverse 911 system has been a big push for the year, along with working hand-in-hand with the Patch, with Foxborough Cable, with Michael, and all of our medias on how can we do a better job getting the messages out to the community. We have four different ways that we're doing that. The first one is reverse 911, and that, that is a great tool for us to be using. We've had more and more people registering for that. The next one would be our medias using Foxborough Cable, along with, everybody seems to have smartphones now, so we're using all of the technologies of the Foxborough Patch, Facebook and Twitter to get the messages out that way. We also are working with the region on an AM radio station, that being 1320. Again, I'll say that AM 1320 is going to be also working with us to get the message out through the radio system. And then we'll still continue to use the Common and the billboards that we have at the Common, along with hard copy handouts that will be at the Public Safety Building in the Senior Center to get the word out. I feel we've had five days to really get ourselves ready. But I also want to make sure that people understand, even though the governor has declared a state of emergency, does not mean that we're just going to go and start putting all of this stuff in play because the federal government or the state's going to pay for it. Just because we declare it doesn't mean we're going to get the funding. We still have to meet the thresholds of damage assessment for the county before we as a community can actually look for reimbursement. So what I've told the police department, the fire department, highway, any department that might potentially have overtime or have any expenses towards this is to code it as the Hurricane Sandy so that we can track that money better and working with Randy Skollins in the Finance Department to track our, to track all of our costs. But at this point, I think we are really ready. We have had plenty of time to get ready, and I think we've been communicating our, our message. I want to say one more thing. It was just a freak accident that the emergency preparedness handbook came out the way it did, that the three presentations that Vicki Lowe and Pauline Clifford and myself did at the high school and at the Senior Center and at the McGinty Room, we didn't know the storm was coming. But I'm happy we did that. I want to commend Foxborough Cable for putting out that presentation. We did the presentation, and they've been broadcasting it all weekend. And we've been allowed to get that message out to our residents. And I want to give you guys kudos on that because it was your hard work that made that happen.
Thank you, Chief. Kevin, anything else you want to add?
No. I think the Chief's done a good job, but what I'd like to do as Chairman is have the different department heads give you any detailed information that they'd like to share at this point, and then entertain any board questions, concerns that you've got. Chief?
Starting last Thursday, we started getting briefings from all.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Frank, is that side microphone on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Starting last Thursday, we started distributing MEMA updates to both the dispatch staff and patrol staff about the pending storm coming in. Yesterday, based on the latest update, we actually put an additional patrol officer out on the road for the next 24 hours, starting today at 8:00 in the morning. And all officers in specialty positions were directed to report in uniform so that we had a contingency that the storm radically got worse during the day. So we're in position to respond to calls for service, especially wires down or any type of traffic or public hazard. And we're going to just go by what we see during the day today, unless there's some significant change. I would imagine by tomorrow morning, we'll go back to our normal staffing.
Okay. Thank you. Roger?
We too started last week. We fueled up all our vehicles. We started up all our oxygen pump engines and all the generators that we have. On Friday, we cleaned off as many basins as we could get to, but I believe they're clogged again this morning because it's been raining and blowing wind all weekend. So I urge the residents of Foxborough, if they get a chance, to go out and knock the leaves off the catch faces so the water can go down. Today, we have divided the town up into four quadrants. Each of the quadrant has a piece of heavy equipment and a crew. Our plan is to just get the, anything that does come down off the roads. If it's got wires on it, of course, we have to work with National Grid. We won't do any chipping until tomorrow. We'll keep the crews on as long as necessary today to make sure that the roads stay open. This doesn't seem to be, you know, a big event, but it probably, it very well could be. We'll just have to wait and kind of see how things go with it.
Let's have Tom up next. Thanks, Rog. Tom? Tom from National Grid.
Thank you. I don't know whether the Board has any specific questions, but let me just tell you, well, it's nice to be back here in Foxborough, not under these conditions, of course. We hope that the work that we've done over the last year has really paid off. One issue that comes up is that union loop that we talked about a lot last year. We've actually done a lot of work last, over the course of the last year, and this weekend we did a lot of patrols, both from the air and on foot, to make sure that there are no soft spots, that it's going to run, you know, as, as we think. I think the one to expect, because of the high winds, hopefully all the main lines are clear, but expect that we're going to see some branches fall on some of the, the house services, trees that are on private property, as well as maybe some of those large trees that might get topped in the wind and fall on one of our phases. We have the report of one outage already, one of the pumping stations. So Deputy Chief and I are going to go out there and survey it to see what's needed out there, but likely it's just a fuse. So we're going to see, hopefully, just little things like downed services, fuses that open up, which are easy to repair. At least, you know, we keep our fingers crossed. We've done a lot of work trying to figure out how to do storm restoration better, so I think it's no secret that we're facing a rather large fine. If you're a regulator, you want to make sure that when you're assessing a fine, that also the utility is doing a root cause analysis to find out, you know, what went wrong. So I've seen myself in my own job, a big overhaul in how we communicate, and hopefully that, hopefully we won't have to use that, but there's a, there's a lot of support behind me to make sure that we do the job better this time.
Tom also is paired up with Deputy Chief, Fire Deputy Chief Bagley. They're going to be kind of a team that Roger's arranged, and we've got emergency contact data overlapping, emergency contact capability overlapping redundant so that we'll be in touch throughout the storm. redundant, so that we'll be in touch throughout the storm. Having Tom aboard is great. He's an outstanding individual and been terrific to work with. I'm sure you're all aware of that, but we just can't say enough about Tom. He's fantastic. So we love having him around. And Deputy Chief Bagley will make sure he gets all the support that he needs to stay on top of things.
Thank you, Kevin. Does the board have any questions that they'd like to ask me while I'm up here?
I had one quick one, and I thank you for coming early, and we'll go around the board quick. And I've had a lot of discussions with Marcy Reed since last year and all the preparedness, and it certainly shows, and I thank you for that. Just a quick common sense for the listeners that are watching this. If something falls on your wire going to your house, who do they call? Do they call National Grid on an 800 number? Do they call Town Hall? Do they call the Fire Department or the police? Just kind of quick, common sense direction.
There is a 1-800 number that they should call, National Grid, but also, I wouldn't hesitate to also place another call to Fire Police Dispatch as well. And I'll be sitting up there, so they'll be feeding that information to me as well. Hopefully, that won't be a burden on public safety, but definitely let us know, but also let, you know, public safety know as well.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah, there is two things, and I'm happy you brought that up, Jim. I really need to stress the point that if any resident sees a wire down, always treat it as live, stay away from it, make the call. I'd rather have us coming out and validating that you're safe and that your home is safe. The other thing is, is that we have a lot of folks now in the last year that have gotten generators. And we've been stressing through this community that make sure that if you're going to be connecting a generator to your home, that it's been installed appropriately, so that it's not backfeeding the system and causing any danger to the folks that are working for National Grid or to anybody else. Last year, we saw a lot of backfeeding into the system. We saw also a lot of carbon monoxide emergencies, because people had them installed the wrong way. So that's one big thing that we need to encourage all of our residents to do, is stay away from down wires and make sure that if you're using a generator, that you've had it installed appropriately.
And while Tom's here, it is a good opportunity. Is there any more questions from the board directly to National Grid?
Could we have the phone number?
That's why I got this card out, because I was going to offer that. And I don't have my glasses on, but for the listeners and people in the room, the emergency number is 1-800-465-1212.
Thank you. And could we have the police, fire dispatch number? Which is the best number to use?
I think 1238, dear Deb.
1238.
1238, so it's 508-543. 1238 would be the best number.
Okay, thank you.
And Tom, last year, in the heat of the moment, we were giving out your home number and your cell number. That's probably not appropriate right now.
Mr. Chairman, we changed our number at home.
I had a feeling. Thank you. Any more from the board? Tom?
However, anniversary gifts would be appreciated. I think Pauline Health, it's sort of a Pauline-Vicki-Mike merged vulnerable population sort of thing. So you guys just jump in as you want, but Pauline, what's your lead on?
Thank you. We're all set. We have been getting information from the state starting last Tuesday, and as we've gotten the fact sheets and everything, we've been updating our website. And actually, the homepage of Foxborough's webpage, you click on the very front, it says Hurricane Ready. You just click on that, and it brings you to our homepage with all the fact sheets, anything that you need to know about flooding, hurricane recovery, hurricane readiness. Also on there, we're going to have information about the generator, too. Our handbook is on there, too, so people are downloading that and calling us and thanking us. They're sending us emails on that. So it's been a wealth of information for people. But it's a lot of information, not only for the residents, but also for food establishments. There's information on there, too. That's about it for me. Vicki, do you want to?
Thanks, Pauline.
By the way, Vicki was actually on vacation and terminated it and came home early for us, so thanks, Vicki.
Because today's my anniversary, too.
Oh, no.
But I'm not married to Tom. I just wanted to say that last year, after everything, and we did our whole exercise with lessons learned, we've been working on those lessons all year long. So in the spring, I was able to get a grant from the state to hire someone who was called an Emergency Management Outreach Worker. She's worked throughout the whole spring and through the fall to reach out to try to find the people with critical needs in the community, that we could, Chief Hatfield and my outreach worker and Lieutenant Haskell have kind of dovetailed our list, so we know of the people that have chosen to be on this list, that have the most critical needs, which would be people that maybe need, have an electric-powered wheelchair, or have some sort of life-sustaining equipment that they need power for, or people who are bed-bound and would need help in an evacuation. In addition to that, we've also, at the Senior Center, had programs where we showed people how to do reverse 911. We've offered to help them do that in our computer lab, and we've also encouraged people to get their emergency contacts, so that if you have a daughter in Plymouth, she'll get the 911 call that there's a town-wide emergency in Foxborough that their parent might be experiencing. So we've done a lot to try to make the distinction between people with critical needs and people who just need the information through the reverse 911. We also were able to get an emergency evacuation plan from Housing. Pat Anis has been able to give us a whole procedure that we've shared with all of the critical people. And we've also, through the grant and the cooperation of all the department heads, involved Roger and Pauline and I and the outreach worker, we've done these emergency management meetings, what you can do to help yourself, to shelter in place, and with the help of Foxborough Cable Access, as Chief said, it was on all weekend long. So we've done these programs in preparation for that, and Pauline got that wonderful book put together. So I think we've done a lot to prepare, and I think we've done basically all we can at this point to see what happens with the emergency. But the biggest message that I think we want to get to people is neighbors checking on neighbors. You know, if you are concerned about an elderly person or someone who's disabled but lives near you, to check on them and just call us if they need help.
Thank you, Vicki.
John? Oh, there you are.
Michael.
Michael John. Yeah, the Michael John.
I mean, yeah, Michael Johns.
Three quick things. I want to follow up on what Vicki said, greet neighbors, checking on neighbors. If someone has left town, gone to a relative, evacuated, gone to a motel or whatever, leave a sign on the door. Tell a neighbor. I would say do both of those things. It really helps the emergency services personnel to know that they don't have to keep banging on the door, calling a number, or whatever. Let somebody know. I'm just taking my notebook here, sorry. You hear a lot about the reverse 911, and one thing that might come to mind for people is that's great until the phones go down. What people need to know is when they register for that, they can register their cellphone. So you still have cellphone use, you're still going to get those reverse 911 calls from the town. And the last thing, something I heard in the meeting earlier this morning, is that trash pickup is still happening today, and tomorrow will, you know, is happening until we hear otherwise.
Thanks, Mike. And I think Sue on animal control issues is up next.
We do need to shelter. We have supplies available to co-locate pets. I did get a grant and acquired those supplies, and they're available.
Roger is going to be talking to Superintendent Deb Spinelli after this meeting, unless he's already had a chance, but we didn't have a lot of time in between about where the location of the shelters is. As you know, the school did not want to have it at Burrows, again, were necessary. We had it there because the high school wasn't complete yet. It's now complete, and that apparently has been the traditional place, and it's now got a much beefed-up capability over what it used to have with the reconstruction program. So if necessary, it'll probably be there, but we're not really in that mode, not thinking we will, the temperature is what they are and all that. But if necessary, it is being worked on. The contact cooldown list and all that is prepared, so we're basically there and ready to go. Bill Casparra is running around doing things right now, but he asked me to relay to the board that he has, or shortly will, make the emergency declaration to Tom, so that the power company can do those home connections if necessary, without needing to get permission and permits and all that. And Bill also relays, he has to be physically present at the scene of any building destruction or damage, so he'll be in communication with the dispatch desk to be able to do that throughout the storm. So that pretty...
I just get a fire.
Yeah, one other thing, too, I think you covered it earlier, but communication with the public in the past couple storms has been a little raggedy, and we've got that really, really buttoned up now in about 20 different ways. We're very happy with that. So talk about that a little more, Rog, would you please?
All right. Again, as I said earlier, there's four ways that we're going to be communicating with everybody. The first one will be through the reverse 911. That is Chief O'Leary and Norfolk County Sheriff's have got, along with the reverse 911 that Deb Spinelli and the school district have. Both of those have been beefed up with phone numbers since last year, and we should have a larger amount of folks that we're going to reach with that. The second one will be our actual medias, working with Foxborough Cable, Foxborough Patch, making sure that messages and information is getting out to the newspapers, being with Frank from Foxborough Reporter, along with using smartphone technology of the Facebook, Twitter, and that type of information. So medias will be used. We also have an AM radio station, being 1320 out of Lauterboro, that will also be broadcasting information out of Foxborough using the AM radio station. And then the last one will be, as Vicki brought up, neighbors checking on neighbors. We'll be having hard copies of information being at the Common, along with hard copies of notices at the Public Safety Building and the Senior Center and here, if we're using the Town Hall and it's open. In regards to the Fire Department, we did up staff. All of our equipment is ready, the generators, the pumps, and we've been making sure that all of our equipment is proactively ready since Friday, so... Does that answer?
Yeah, thanks. I just have a couple of quick things. Mark just brought it to my attention. Last year, at this time, water and sewer wasn't talked about too much, and I think it's because they were very proactive, they got the generators, and there really wasn't a problem. But I'm assuming water and sewer, the pump stations and all that is...
Absolutely, and we already had once fuse go off, and Tom Cofflin and National Grid are already on top of it. That affected one of our pumps. But Roger Hill and his staff are right in the communications loop, and all of the information is being looked at constantly.
Okay. And the other, basically, a comment and a question. Looking back last year, you know, the department heads and the department staff and the selectmen, but in addition to that, there was a tremendous amount of volunteer people showing up to help throughout, whether it's at the shelters or, you know, going door-to-door. I'm looking out at Willie Long now. I'm probably going to put you on the spot, but Willie, I've seen him at a lot of the school committee meetings, and he's, are you the liaison a lot for the students in the school? You are at the shelters. Is there any questions or any concerns that you'd want to share from a school perspective? Nothing at all? Okay.
They'll be ready. I did actually talk to Lori, that has helped organize all our volunteers, and she started making some phone calls on Friday and during the weekend. And again, you know, we can't do it all on our own. If it wasn't for the volunteers that we have in this community and everybody pulling together, it would be very, very difficult for me or anybody to be able to handle everything. But I do believe, because we've had five days of really kind of planning for this, all our volunteers, everybody's ready to go. And I have no doubt in my mind, if we make the call, they'll be there.
I don't know Willie, Mr. Chairman, but it's a pleasure to meet you, and I got to say, my condolences. Hey, you got a snow day, and you're here with us. Sorry, but thanks. Well, you know, snow day, day off. So as Rog says, the beginning, the coordination with the volunteer networks has happened. The key people have been contacted, and we've got all the cooldown lists all prepared, updated. Town Hall, schools, department heads, contact data, all that's been done, so we're basically ready to roll. One other thing, we do have, we think, the Pakistani delegation beginning their visit tomorrow. Now, I apologize to you, it was on and off and on and off, and as of Friday, it was on. I don't have any information this morning yet, whether it is in fact on or not. We just don't know. We're assuming it is, but, so I apologize that we haven't been able to get definitive word to you, but it's just, you know, we don't know either. On the assumption that this visit is on, I've given Frank a boatload of information. We'll give it to the other press folks that are here about what it is. But basically, it's a delegation of fairly high-ranking Pakistani folks, they're like deputy minister-type people. State Department program, locally coordinated by the Mass Municipal Association. We're one of, I think, three or four or five communities having two or three people visit. This will be the third rotation of Pakistanis coming. I got a chance to meet some of them the first, the second rotation, I think. So we've got a nice schedule of events planned, assuming it happens. Basically, shadowing different department heads, visiting our facilities, learning about how we do government. They'll be at your meeting tomorrow night and watching how elected folks do their business. Their key concern, believe it or not, probably the number one on all of their lists, is how American politics and our governmental system and our electoral system, a very exciting time for them to be here during the election, how we manage to do all this without vast amounts of corruption and dishonesty. Not that we're completely free of that, but by and large, we're about 98%, and that's fairly unique in the world. Several other countries have been able to pull it off, too, but we really do it well. And so they're really fascinated to see how we do government free of, you know, wholesale corruption, which is very much the case in the rest of the world, particularly in the Middle East right now, where there's a lot of turmoil and disruption and governments that are in nebulous form and whatnot. So they, I cannot tell you how much they're looking forward to watching the five of you do your business tomorrow night. They're really, really interested in that.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. They are also, their number-one request, other than seeing the board meeting, their number-one request was to watch the election. In the middle of a storm emergency and everything else is going on, Bob very graciously offered to give them an explanation as part of the schedule, I forget what day it's on...
Wednesday.
Of how an election takes place, you know, how we do electronic voting and all that, and how we keep the integrity in the system. And then he's actually going to give them a quick tour, an emphasis on quick, because that's of necessity, of the polling place next week. They'll be here this week and next week. The other thing that they, was very high on the list, is they want to see us doing American things, you know, in our homes and the way we function. So anybody wants to host them for a dinner with you and friends, Ann and I are having them over next week for dinner at our house. They're fascinated by seeing how we live, frankly. So tomorrow morning at 9:00, we hope, we have no way to know, but we're hoping they'll have our opening reception. Jim, I know it's late notice, I apologize, but if you can be here, and assuming we are going forward, we'll have coffee and pastry, assuming we have power, and the restaurant Ron up at Lafayette House is actually able to do it. If not, we'll figure something out. We're going to have them here and say hello. They'd love to meet you if you're available. And Jack Othlet has very graciously offered to do a presentation on the history of Foxborough. Following that, assuming I have any time at all to work on it, I'll be giving them sort of a, how is our town government structured, so that as they go through things for the next two weeks, they'll understand what they're saying and where, how it fits in our style of government. The way we do it in New England with town meeting is really very unusual from their point of view. It's not like their model at all. So they're fascinated by that in town meetings and all that sort of thing. So it'll be a lot of fun, hopefully. Are you around tomorrow?
I am now, yep.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. And again, I apologize for the chaos, but it's really a manifestation of the storm. They didn't think they were going to get them here. The plan was to fly them in Sunday to get ahead of the storm, and we're waiting word today to find out if they made it. So hopefully, they're right up the street in the hotel.
Perfect, thank you. And where this is a public meeting, any more discussion or questions while... while all the department heads are here?
So if someone sees a tree down, should they call that same number at the fire department, or should they call highway? Not involving...
I would go through the fire department, where we have Tom Coughlin working with us. Go directly through us, we can handle it that way.
Okay, thanks.
You guys all set? You're all set? All right. And department heads and staff and volunteers, thank you all for coming, and best of luck during the next couple hours. Thank you. Second, if all is in favor? 5-0.
That was either Fox 25 or 7. I don't know who it was. They wanted to...